Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our workshop, our second workshop, for our budget for fiscal year 2024. It's good to see all of you here. We're going to get started. I'm going to turn it over now to our very able county administrator, Mr. Long.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and good morning and again, welcome to your second and if everything goes right today, final workshop on the FY24 budget. We do have an additional placeholder in July, Commissioners. If you determine at the end of the day that we've got more work to do, again, we can make that determination at that point in time. But Commissioners, just to start, as you all know, you've provided a lot of direction to this point in the process, which is all reflected in the proposed preliminarily balanced budget before you. And while we stop and focus on the budget at your budget workshops, I always like to take the opportunity to emphasize the fact that our budget process is not a once or twice a year exercise, but an ongoing year-round project process. In fact, it's an ongoing multi-year process. It reflects the board's long-term fiscal policies, but it does require annual decision-making during the budget adoption process. Commissioners, a big part, as you all know, of the budget process is ensuring that we continue to place the county in the very best position financially to handle whatever it is that comes our way. You've said me, you've heard me say a couple of times throughout this process already this year that you've done that. We've budgeted our way through, just in recent years, through natural disasters and record-high inflation and a global pandemic. And I only say that to stress the fact that no two budget years are alike and no two budget cycles are alike. And as we discussed in April, we thought sort of the, we were anticipating the big sort of looming budget highlight for this year obviously was our FRS legislation and the potential impacts of that proposed FRS legislation. However, as the boards are aware, the FRS legislation had a much smaller impact than originally projected, and we'll discuss that in a little bit more detail today. So at this point in the process, Commissioners, the budget picture is much clearer than back in April. We now have taxable property values from the property appraisers. We have all of our constitutional officer budget submissions. Again, we have our, the final determination on FRS rates and a few other things that came out of the legislative session that are reflected here. And OMB has conducted all of their departmental reviews and final recommendations for operating in capital, which are all reflected in the budget. In case you didn't notice, Commissioners, the budget staff is wearing pink today. Rashonda, I just want to make sure everybody's awake. As you'll notice in the back row here, they didn't give me the memo. But I said if things don't go right, no more pink for the rest of, for any other budget workshop. But in summary, Commissioners, we've got a, we've prepared a preliminary balanced budget that reflects again all of your previous direction for your consideration today. And the highlights, and I'll just tick off just a couple of the highlights before you. The proposed budget reflects no increase in the general property tax mileage rate for the 12th consecutive year. It reflects currently pending board direction today, no use of fund balance for operating. And that's important because that positions us to grow our reserves for any future uncertainty. It also reflects the last year of ARPA revenues for us, the last year of ARPA revenue replacement, and it maximizes that funding opportunity. It maintains a high quality of service delivery. Unlike in some previous years, it does not reflect any service reductions. That's good, but it also continues to reflect a lot of budget constraint throughout, as is reflected in the proposal before you that does not include any new general revenue positions in the budget. It has a responsible capital budget. And while, and I mentioned this to Commissioners in the briefings, while it may not contain a lot of shiny new objects, it certainly reflects a responsible approach to maintaining safe and functioning infrastructure throughout the county. And that's just a reminder, thousands of acres and millions of square feet and miles of roads. And I know you get the idea. It also continues, Commissioners, to reflect a high performing, ensuring a high-performing workforce with fair pay and equitable practices. It includes a performance, a performance raise of 0 to 5% with an average of 3. However, it also, based on the direction of the board at your previous workshop, provides an option for the board to provide a 5% across the board pay raise for all county employees, consistent with the approach utilized last year. And finally, Commissioners, the budget continues to optimize our resources and aligns our organization to continually fulfill the vision of the board reflected in our strategic plan to have a community which is safe, vibrant, and healthy. Again, we do that throughout the budget. And from our dedicated revenue to the board's approved strategic initiatives to the fully funding of public safety through the sheriff's budget request to the sufficient resources that you've provided to ensure that we have for current and future ambulances to the community. And it goes, the list goes on and on, but I do need to, to give Alan a few things to talk about. So as I wrap up my comments, Commissioners, obviously, a lot of, a lot of effort goes in to this process, and you heard me sort of identify, call out our budget staff here just a minute ago. And I want to give them a lot of credit for getting us to this point. Hopefully, as you can tell, what could be complex or arduous sort of information is provided to you in a very straightforward manner for your policy deliberation today. Commissioners, we've got scheduled today from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. However, I don't think we're going to, to need even close to that amount of time, but we do have several budget discussion items for your consideration today. Again, any additional budget direction that we receive from you today, we do again have that July budget workshop on the calendar. Again, however, we may not need it, and if we don't, then today's ratification will be reflected on the July 11 regular agenda. Commissioners, the budget, this budget is consistent with our continuing to be one of the most efficient and affordable counties in Florida, year in and year out. And again, it certainly reflects all that budget discipline, sound fiscal planning, and organization-wide focus on innovation, cost avoidance, and efficiency, while also, not unimportantly, always striving to set the standard in service delivery. So with that, Commissioners, the final point I need to make is just, I want to recognize the constitutional officers for their spirit of cooperation and collaboration. As you know, Commissioners, they have a significant impact on our budget. And so their, their cooperation and the working relationship that we have with them is something that we very much appreciate. And finally, Commissioners, I want to thank all of you for your consistent guidance and leadership throughout this project and including today in the development of the FY24 budget. And with that, Commissioners, I'd like to hand it off to Alan Rosen, who I, who's just going to run us through a little bit of an overview, and then we'll be teed up to, to jump into our budget discussion items.
Thanks, Vince. Good morning, Commissioners. As the administrator said, I'm going to walk you through some of the budget stuff. But first, I just wanted to show you, once we're done the budget overview, as the administrator said, we have a few budget discussion items to consider, and we'll go through those right after we're done the budget overview. So to start, Commissioners, we're going to hit item one, our budget overview. And on the screen, you'll see just the broad highlights, as the administrator said. Well, some things worth repeating, of course. It's our 12th consecutive year of no increase in the countywide mileage rate, and the budget continues to focus on support for public safety through your sheriff and your EMS budgets. We have no new general revenue positions, and we're continuing to maintain our infrastructure. So again, just a quick snapshot, but again, I'm getting into a bunch more detail in a few minutes. As the administrator said, a lot of what you see throughout the budget supports your strategic plan. At this year's retreat in January, you updated your second year of your five-year plan. That, of course, informs and guides our collective efforts. Throughout your strategic plan, you have dozens of strategic initiatives, which are specific projects that align with the county's strategic priorities. Of course, through the budget process, we're able to then align the budget to your initiatives, which, of course, optimize our limited resources to your highest priorities. On the screen, you'll just see several of the initiatives that we've highlighted throughout this, throughout this budget process. With that very brief overview of the budget, let me take a second and talk about the economy. Not much has changed since our discussions with you in April. Of course, everybody's following the Fed and the interest rates. And of course, it's very important to us because if interest rates rise, people tend to buy less. When people buy less, we have less collections and sales taxes. And of course, when inflation rises, things cost us more. As everybody's paying attention, the Fed did pause raising interest rates at this last quarterly meeting, but they did indicate throughout the year they intend to continue to raise them by the end of the year. On the next slide, and again, we want to highlight this one more time. We did share it with you in April. But before we do bring anything to you seeking any new taxes, fees, or positions, we're continuously seeking opportunities for cost savings and avoidances. And throughout this year, it's a very deliberate approach, deliberate approach to look for these opportunities. And this is not just done during the budget process, Commissioners. This year, as you saw in your budget materials, we identified over half a million dollars in new cost savings and avoidances. And from 2013, the numbers were fairly impressive. We've identified over $63.6 million in that time. And again, a number of specific examples in your agenda materials today. So drilling down a little into the numbers in the budget, Commissioners, what you're going to see on the screen here is just a quick summary of your basic general revenue overview in the budget. And this highlights that where your property taxes and general revenue increases are. We had about $16 million in additional revenue. And on the right-hand column, you're going to see, as the administrator already highlighted once, and I've said, a large portion of that, or the bulk of that, goes to the sheriff's office. Again, you also see the increase in there for other constitutionals. The bulk of that is the supervisor election because next year is a presidential preference primary. So there is about a $2.5 million increase in their budget. And the balance of it takes care of just your basic overall operating expenses. So shifting from the general revenue to the overall budget, and this can seem a little overwhelming, but this includes everything in the budget, all the differences. I'm just going to take a few minutes to walk through this slide. This does include the general revenue, but then the other half of the revenue in here pretty much goes to items that we would consider dedicated revenues for things such as your EMS and your fire. And in that regard, this year in particular, we have new revenues coming in, but they're replacing last year when we were using one-time or fund balances revenue. So while they seem to be increases, they're replacing things that we were using in the past with just one-time allocations. In addition, you're going to see an increase in our level of tourism revenue, which has to stay, of course, within the requirements of statutes, but that's the return to a more of a robust travel economy. So you'll see an increase there. The rest of the budget, of course, Commissioners, covers things like our contracts, our repairs and maintenance, and our general capital program, where we have a slight increase there. It's basically offsetting the inflationary cost of construction. And finally, as Vince shared overall, we continue to take a very fiscally constrained approach to our budgeting process to ensure the long-term fiscal viability of the county. I do want to take a minute, Commissioners, and dig in a little and explain general fund, our fund balance, as the administrator said in his opening comments. We, at this point, pending final board direction, have not using any fund balance. And fund balance, Commissioners, is just a county savings account. It's where we keep cash flow so we don't have to wait for property, you know, so we don't have to borrow money at the beginning of the year because it takes a little while to property taxes to get here. It stays on hand for unforeseen emergencies like storms, pandemics, downturns in revenues. So it's, it's there to help build up cash for future capital projects. As you can see on this table, we did have a peak use during the recession, the Great Recession back in 2013. We actually got up to $5 million a year, but we've been very diligent and deliberate over the last decade of getting that used down to as low a level as possible. But again, a small amount used like we did last year and in 2022 is not unreasonable as the fund balance will replenish itself over time. As I wrap up my comments, Commissioner, I do want to take a minute to show you a few slides that we compare to other like-sized Florida counties. Again, Commissioners, we track this information very closely. It's an important metric on how we are performing. As shown on the screen, we have the lowest total net budget of our comparable counties. We also, when we compare on a per capita basis to, more to equalize it, we're also the lowest budget per county resident. And then again, we're the second lowest when it comes to employees per thousand. With that, Commissioners, what you'll see after we deliberate today, we have a couple of next steps. We will get final property appraiser numbers on July 1st. We're working with our formal estimates right now. Based on historic precedents, we don't anticipate much change come July 1st, but whatever change we do have will inform the board as part of your ratification. As the administrator said, we have a workshop scheduled if necessary. We'll ratify that evening, and then you do have your two formal public hearings come September. With that, based on our briefings, Commissioner, we've gone through, we have a series of recommendations for you, and of course, we're seeking specific board direction on option eight, which is to include the 5% pay raise across the board for all employees with a funding mechanism consistent with how we treated it last year. With that, Commissioners, I'll turn it back to the county administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will hand it back to the chair just for process standpoint. Madam Chair, once you all conduct your, your voting and any deliberations on, on item one, staff's prepared to begin the process on the rest of the budget discussion items.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator and Assistant County Administrator. We appreciate that presentation. Commissioners, before we get into discussion, we have Commissioner Brian Welch on the phone, and I'd like to entertain a motion. I move by Commissioner O'Keefe, second by Commissioner, who was it? Commissioner Minna, that Commissioner Brian Welch may appear by phone. All those in favor? Any opposition? Hearing none, Commissioner Welch may appear by phone. Now, I'd like to move into a discussion, the Commissioners, Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, staff. I'd like to move options one through eight.
It's been moved, and second for option one through eight is there discussion by Commissioners?
Additional, I'm a...
It's Commissioner Proctor.
Commissioners, I receive, you've received item number five. And as a matter of process and sequence, should we not include the support for item number five? And I think that the reason that we probably want to consider this now because to adopt the general budget and wait to item number five is brought up after we have set agreement on everything would be almost like resurrecting the budget that we've laid to rest for the rest of the year. So I want to ask staff, can't we also put item five into the eight options so that we won't be outside of our process in making this look so like this is, you know? Because one of the good things about this, this request is the bicentennial. And Alan, I wanted to ask you about our strong support. It flashed so fast, and, but where are we with bicentennial support? We don't want to run short on that. Secondly, Commissioners, given the nature and the quality of what I have seen, from what I have seen presented from the Civil Rights Museum effort, I think it coincides in a very timely way. I think that it coincides, and it enhances the story of Leon County's bicentennial. And I can't think of a more timely capturing and presentation of data that will help enhance Leon County's overall story. So I'd like to see the request of $60,000, and I ask staff's direction for how do we include that and not make it an afterthought.
Mr. Administrator? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and certainly, Commissioners, the reason we have this order for you here is a little bit of a technicality in that the option that we've provided for you on option five is out of the current budget. So we, we have the current budget contingency available to fund that budget, or else we would have had, you're absolutely right, or else we would have had it here contemplated in this year's, in the FY24 budget. But again, yes.
How much money is left in contingency for this year?
$190.
$190. Commissioner Proctor, I appreciate you bringing that up. The way it's contemplated being in this, in this year's budget, I kind of like it that way versus putting it in next year, so we just take it out of contingency. So if we can just, if the board wouldn't mind, I would really like for us to consider taking it out since we have the money, $190 in contingency, which was, which would leave us like $130 there. I simply did not want us to do the benediction.
Yes, sir.
And they tried to join the church after we've benedicted and gone home.
Understood. Understood. Any others coming?
I'm very comfortable with options one through eight.
I have Commissioner O'Keefe and Commissioner Minna in queue to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, can you confirm the, or Commissioner Proctor, confirm the motion? It's for options one through?
Eight.
Eight, okay.
Yes.
All right, then I have a few questions, mostly for staff, I think, on some of these. When we look at the page 40 of our book, and it looks at the sheriff's office, constitutional office budget, we know, and we've discussed quite a bit of that budget. This year increase is committed costs to run a correctional institution and union negotiated pay rate increases and a step-up plan to keep and recruit necessary talent. When I look at the future projected 2025, 2026, 2027, 2028 budget, it worries me because it's the only constitutional office where we go from an overall sheriff's office budget of roughly $103 million for the fiscal '24. Then we increase $6 million to $109, then to '26, another $7 million to $116, then another, I don't know, do the math, $8 million to $124. And in five years, we're talking about a $133, $133 million budget. We're talking about a $30 million increase over five years. Can you just walk us through why that is and what we might in the future think about?
Commissioner, Madam Chairman, that is strictly just a forecast based on a 5% growth rate? We just projecting out if that, that's about a 5% growth rate in their budget?
And it's the only constitutional office where we're seeing that much? Or is it just because that is already such a large base on the 5%?
It's, it's a large base. And then the supervisor election, you'll notice theirs goes down because, for example, the presidential preference goes away, but then you'll see it spike back up again in 2028, every four-year cycle.
Okay. All right, then, let's see here. In this option, options one through eight, there's a number of things we're voting on, so let's take them, questions one by one. The sidewalk implementation program, this would be option number six. The part of the supporting report says that we can, during the meeting, request certain segments be vetted by staff to be considered if they qualify. And we have a section, I'm happy to see a lot of District 5 segments be scored in here and a lot of grants, federal grant money that I'll skip lauding everybody for the sake of time that were in on to, ahead of a lot of other counties. I would like to consider adding, and I'll make a motion on this in a second. There's going to be a lot, but, substitute, to add Appalachia Parkway, sidewalk on Appalachia Parkway, Highway 27, from Connor Boulevard out west, 3.1 miles to Appalachia Regional Park, where there currently is no sidewalk, to add that to the list to be considered for our sidewalk project priority list. And actually, at this time, I'll ask Commissioner Proctor if he'd accept that as a friendly amendment.
I just think that US 27 is a federal highway. Is that our road or what? And then, and do we have responsibility with the feds? Couldn't, couldn't DOT or somebody pay for that? I mean, as a funding thingy, I think of US 27 as a federal highway. How's that work? I don't have a problem with sidewalks. I just think that it's a federal road and what they get first.
Sure. Basically, the way that your streetwalk policy, or sidewalk policy works is that, and Commissioner O'Keefe is right, you could bring it up, at this point, you could bring it up at any point, really, a commissioner could bring it up. And because we have several tiers of priorities, what all this does is give staff the direction to analyze that project and to place it in the appropriate category and place it in the appropriate tier based on engineering analysis, based on Commissioner Proctor's, you raise, potentially maybe other funding opportunities and that sort of thing. But, but, but Commissioner O'Keefe is right, based on the policy itself, a commissioner can, can bring it up. Again, now, or really any time to ask for staff to, to evaluate a, a segment of sidewalk and to have it prioritized in the, in the appropriate tier.
Yeah, but we're not afraid of information. We're not afraid of analysis. It's a need, it's a public safety. I have no problem with it if it is germane to the content of one through eight, that's fine. I would emphasize, though, in District 5, what, what disturbs me greatest is the failure for us to complete Magnolia Drive from, from Jim Lee. We just can't get that closed and bring it all the way up to Appalachia Parkway. And the other problem, problematic absence of sidewalk is Thorpe Street. And I just don't know, and those are the most chronic areas of human foot traffic that we fail, two governments fail, the local citizenry. And I wish we could expedite that, but this is a new look. It's not come up before, but I'm certainly open, and I know our commission is because it enhances public safety.
The, and you're right, my hearing's not too good. You said, you mentioned Thorpe Street is what you said, right, the other road?
Critical.
Correct. And the, I'll note, those two, Magnolia Drive, are on this list, and actually, Magnolia Drive extension is slated for construction.
It's under construction.
It's under construction, and Thorpe Street is also on this list. I'm all for it as well, but this is just to add it to the list to go somewhere between tier three or four, one, two, three or four.
Yes, to give, to give resounding credit to the board and to the IA board. The Magnolia Drive, the entirety of it is fully funded and under construction. And Thorpe Street has been advanced from the last year of the sales tax, I think about a decade sooner, to specifically address safety issues, including sidewalks and lighting and the whole complement that, that the IA has advanced at this point in the process.
You know what, for simplicity's sake, I won't request any changes. I'll come back in comment time and make a motion for that separate, separately. I'll come back in comment time and make a motion for that separate, separately, for the sake of, we already have a lot in this. Then further questions on some of the items in here is strategy, the strategic plan document. There is a section noted here on completed items. And it notes that completed doesn't mean done, but staff is doing it. However, there's one marked done already from January that I got put in here for collaborating with regional partners in the building and technical trades to increase entry level apprenticeship opportunities, targeting specifically training on the job upon hiring positions. And there's a caption here talking about a lot of programs that seemingly have already been in place. And so I just want to make sure I understand how that can be considered done in 60 days.
As you said, Commissioner, it's not complete. We will continue to work on it for the next five years, but we have a lot of initiatives that are ongoing that we're working on. So we don't want anybody to believe, and I think you articulated exactly right, we never want you to believe that we're done working on that. So we're continuing to work with OEB, we're continuing to work with the schools, we're continuing to work with our partners to identify other opportunities. And you'll see each year we'll add to the list by year, all the additional efforts we're taking. So you'll see how this will grow over the next three years, the next three and a half years, as we add more initiatives.
And so you're confirming that staff is working on additional programs?
That is the intent. We will continue to try to leverage our partnerships and see what else we can come up with.
All right.
On point to that point, Mr. Chairman, I might ask Commissioner, if I could ask a question related to what you're saying. Staff, could we in the future, instead of calling done, done or completed, could we use the word in progress? Could we use the word underway? Could we use the word it's happening now? But when I hear the word done, it clues me as it has this commissioner, that it's final, it's completed. So I would ask as a policy suggestion that when projects have not, we've not really uncut it, that we call it in progress or something.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Absolutely. And then thank you for the time on this. This is where I would like to introduce a substitute motion. I think, and the substitute motion is to, actually, is to approve options one through seven and then discuss option eight separately, which is the 5% across the board pay. That's the substitute motion request.
Substitute motion for options one through seven, is there a second?
I'll second after discussion.
Motion has been seconded for discussion by Commissioner Minor. I have Commissioner Minor in queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to commend the county administrator and his staff on formulating this budget. Really well done, and it's been a tough budget year. It's a lot better than it was three months ago with the prospects of what we were dealing with, with the FRS legislation, but that turned out to be not the order of magnitude that we had feared. And even despite all that, it's been a very tough budget year. So I want to thank the county administrator and everybody that was working on this budget. The item I did want to talk about was the 5% across the board pay raise. I think we're living in very difficult times. The inflation is affecting our Leon County employees as well as our citizens. I think it's a will of the board to support a 5% increase. I believe that's, if we had to vote right now, I think the majority of our support that. As a general matter, though, I disagree with ATB, with across the board pay increases. In my former life, I was a manager at a consulting firm and one of the most powerful tools we had as managers was that merit pay increase. Because so many of our folks in our teams were doing incredible work. If someone's employed, if a person is a Leon County employee and they're doing exceptional work, they're working hard, they're working smart, and they're delivering incredible value to citizens, they should be paid more than someone who's not working at that level. And as a manager, I need to have that tool in my toolbox to help cultivate my team to be the best that they possibly can be. I understand the reason for an across the board increase. I think there are times when that is necessary and there are reasons why we would be interested in doing that. But I don't want to have us take away that incredibly helpful tool that managers have within our organization to encourage the very best from our employees. And so I think if the will of the board is to have the cost of a 5% across the board increase be adopted, what I'd recommend instead is to have the merit increases that average out at 5% increase. So if we want to provide that level of increase to all of our employees in general as a line item, I would rather have a merit pay increase that is commensurate with the 5% average increase. Does everybody understand what I'm asking about? If the will of the board is to do that type of financial increase, I'd like to encourage the board to think about that meritorious pay structure. I think that gives our managers the ability to reward exceptional behavior and encourage that kind of performance from our people. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So here's what I'm going to do. I got Commissioner Minor just finished, Commissioner Kanban, Commissioner Proctor. Madam Vice Chair, would you like to speak? Commissioner Welsh, would you like to speak as well?
No, sir. I'm good for now.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to recognize in that order, Kanban, Proctor, and then the vice chair, and then we're going to go to a vote on the substitute motion. Commissioner Kanban.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff, county administrator, with, by moving forward the 5% increase, we're not taking away the ability for supervisors to have the discretion to have individual pay raises for certain employees who are exceeding expectations. Are we taking away that ability or is that still in place, like through their discretionary budget?
No, this would eliminate that ability. We would still perform our appraisals. We would still have an annual give and take. We'd go over objectives and projects and things we anticipate, but it would be a 5% automatic, all employees across the board. So yes.
So no employees in any department would be subject to have any kind of discretionary raise by their individual supervisor?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The distinction between what Commissioner Minor is calling for is a 5% one-time pay. I am suggesting in option eight, my desire to see a permanent increase across this board and it not be a one-time. One of the things we saw, Jeff Burlow actually brought it to my attention in Sunday's paper with greater clarity than I had previously gathered, but our employees will be facing a 9% increase in cities' overall tax rates. That's a 9% increase and we're to give them a one-time, but I'm almost sure that that 9% was going to stay in place forever. We've seen the state of Florida operate this year, and I think that $117 billion budget, which reflects the health of our economy because the legislature did not open believing they would get to 117. But Florida's economy is performing so incredibly well that even the state under Republican regime offers a 5% permanent. I desire to respect our employees, that this 5% goes into their retirement calculations. It goes into their benefit measures. I don't see why we would think of them. They're not a one-night stand to me. I like something permanent. And I think that options one through eight does not make them a one-night stand or a one night or a one year, you know? We appreciate you. No, it's permanent. I want to say also that, Alan, if you could, the two things I ask, I mean, well, one thing was the bicentennial support. Is it solid? Is it enough to carry us for the year? And secondly, if you would please comment and afford our board to, and for our employees to appreciate our insurance program and how for a number of years you tout that we've not gone up on the mileage rate, but could you also indicate how stable we have supported and offset? And I have to believe that premiums have gone up, but still what we ask of employees has remained the same. Could you talk about insurance and talk about the bicentennial support?
Mr. Chairman, we have ample funds for tourism, for the bicentennial commissioner. As you said, we have ample funds identified in the tourism budget to do that. And yes, we have maintained the employee-employee split for health insurance for at least the last six or seven years, if not longer. And the employees have been the beneficiary of that as well over that time.
Very good. So we're still paying 87% premiums?
Yes, 87, and then it's 90/10, I think, when they do the participate in the wellness program.
Very good. It's very, very necessary that when you work for Leon County that people understand that the county pays 87% of our employees' health insurance coverages. That can be respected and it has not bounced around regardless of whatever premium adjustments have occurred for our employees. Let me just say that on the motion, commissioners, I believe that morale, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that the health, financial health of the county is sound, it's balanced. We also have this intangible duty, real accountant, that's not measurable in money and morale. And to say when Christmas comes that the merits of your children deserve more from Santa Claus than others for whatever metrics might be utilized, I don't know. But over the years, I've tended to just as a parent to recognize all children alike and no matter who was naughty and who was nice. I think that this year we maintain morale to say to all of our employees. And then I think that we've not denied and we've not deprived the county administrator from recognizing the merit. When we do option eight, Mr. Administrator, we've not cut you off from the additional rewards that you can give to those you see merit in, have we?
Additional annual pay? No, this would limit that to 5% across the board. That's what that, that's what this does.
Very good. Well, I choose that we respect everybody, all of our workers who wear our uniform and that we see them with the same favor. And I think that engenders, it will engender inflated appreciation and respect for the organization. Those are my thoughts about that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One point.
Can you clarify, Mr. Chair? We're voting on options one through seven right now? And then after that vote, we will come back to option eight immediately? Or we're going to go to option eight and Commissioner?
Substitute motion on the floor is for options one through seven. If that passes, then we'll discuss eight and then we'll go to vote on that. And then if the substitute motion fails, the main motion on the floor is options one through eight.
Okay.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, first of all, want to thank our administrators, assistant, our county administrator, assistant county administrator for the presentation this morning. This is our second budget workshop. And at this point, we're more solidified as far as the adverse effects of the taxes, effect of the legislative action. And I think we've got some concrete information here that has been put together and amended since our last, since our first budget workshop. So I want to thank you all for the information. I am especially pleased with, to approve option five that deals with our medical examiner fees. I think it's certainly time that those fees were increased. I think we are concerned about the healthcare of our marginalized people in the marginalized communities, those that the bond health service and, what is it, bond health service and community health service provide medical assistance too. So I appreciate that recommendation, glad to certainly approve that. I believe that we as commissioners have to establish a policy that recognizes the worth of all of our county employees, from the lowest to the highest pay, because I believe all have some worth in what we do on a daily basis. I believe that bifurcating any merit increase or just across the board pay increases is the best approach to take. We all recognize inflation and it's a reality. And I believe to respect our, all of our county employees, I would certainly support option five to give an across-the-board pay increase, which as the county administrator and assistant county administrator indicated, will affect from, everything from their retirement, what's paid in retirement. It would affect their, I guess, the baseline on what their salary is. And I believe if any administrator wants to give a merit increase based on outstanding performance, I don't believe we have a policy, Madam County Attorney, that prohibits that. And I know that's been raised by a couple of commissioners here, but I'd just like to know definitively if voting for option eight circumvents any merit increase for other employees of the county. I'm not familiar with the policy that says that.
Well, there are HR policies related to when it is permissible to give raises, so there are parameters for that. And I think more than anything else, what administrative staff is saying is it's a budgetary issue at that point as well.
Oh, it's a budgetary?
Yes.
And there are constraints in the HR policies as well, yes, both.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Mr. County Administrator.
Sure, sure. I can provide clarification on this. It's really a very straightforward process. We have annual pay increases. Traditionally, we had, we do a performance evaluation. And generally speaking, that's zero to five, average of three. And again, as has been noted here, it's a very important management tool. However, that notwithstanding, we feel, again, and from my standpoint, I'll tell you that I think it's entirely appropriate what the board did last year and it's entirely appropriate for your consideration again this year, given the issues that have been raised related to high inflation and that sort of thing. No argument. Generally speaking, as a rule, it is very important to have the performance appraisal system in place, to be able to appraise employees. When you do this, yes, you do eliminate the ability of the county administrator, again, to do anything above and beyond what, for annual performance increases. So I just want to be very clear about that. Again, I think it's entirely appropriate. I think it's entirely within the discretion of the board to say in the last year, in the current year, and in FY24, we anticipate some pretty extraordinary circumstances and so we want to sort of create a one-off, if you will. But that's sort of the general explanation of that.
Thank you. May I ask the follow-up question? Mr. County Administrator, are there instances where even with the annual performance evaluation that some employees might not even get the increase, the minimum 3%?
Not in this, not under this option.
No, no.
Okay.
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 Notwithstanding this option, are there instances where, once the annual evaluation is performed, that some employees do not receive a raise even at the 3% level?
Yes, based on performance, yes.
Okay. So, or 2023, if option eight is eliminated, then it's really discretionary with the various supervisors and administrators as far as who receives a raise and who doesn't, based on what they consider is their performance.
Based on a performance appraisal process, which is a very standardized, very articulate process that the employees and the supervisors go through on an annual basis, yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, if we're concerned about our employees and the inflationary impact that it's having on all of us across the board. it's having on all of us across the board, I believe that Option 8 would address that. I think that's just the best option. However, hearing our county attorney indicate that voting for Option 8, other than a budgetary issue, does not prohibit merit increases, I think the best option that will establish that we are concerned about all of the county employees would be to accept Option 8.
Can I be, can I provide a clarification, please? Maybe, just important, I'd be very clear about this.
Okay.
This will, this would be the merit increase, period, the end, for all county employees. It would be at 5%. It would eliminate the ability to do anything else except for the 5%. Just have to be very clear about that.
Okay.
The other, the other way, the way we generally do it provides more discretion, as far as that's concerned. But yes, just want to be, just want to make sure everybody is very clear about that.
And then following up, Mr. Chair, that's from the budgetary standpoint.
From a practical standpoint, budgetary, practice, everything, we will, we will, you will, each employee will have an evaluation, and they will receive 5%, regardless of what their performance appraisal is.
That's Option 8, right?
That's Option 8.
Option 8.
All right. So I got Commissioners in queue, but I said I was going to go to a vote, and I like to keep my word. All those in favor of the motion on the substitute motion of 1 through 7 and discussing 8 afterwards, indicate, oh, well, I will indicate that I'm going to go myself with the main motion, which is Options 1 through 8. All those in favor of substitute motion of 1 through 7 and discussing 8 after, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Motion fails. Now we'll take up the main motion. All those in favor of Options 1 through 8 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, no discussion on that, since we're voting on it?
No.
We'll discuss. This is rather, I was sort of...
I think we were discussing that before the substitute motion.
Well, at least, I'll say, I was saving arguments against 8 and changing for a possible discussion out of the sake of respecting the time on the substitute motion.
We have until 3 o'clock, Mr. Chairman.
I will be quick.
We can wait. I'll tell you what. 3 o'clock. I'll tell you what, we can do that. I'll give Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Proctor, and Commissioner Minor opportunity to speak on the motion on the floor, and then we'll go to a vote. We'll start with Commissioner Minor, since he was eager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, well, the substitute motion failed, so I mean, you know, we've got to vote, the way that the motion's been constructed, we've got to vote for every single option en masse or not. I'm going to vote for Options 1 through 8. You know, I understand Commissioner Proctor's reasoning on this, on the, across-the-board pay raise, and I've got no major issue with it. I, you know, he and I share different perspectives on this. But just want to make a point, you know, what we're voting on with Option 8, we're taking away the option for a Leon County manager to reward the employees within his or her team that are doing the best work. We're taking away that opportunity for that manager to reward exceptional performance. The only way that that manager will have the ability to acknowledge that person's performance is just through the evaluation process. There's no merit increase because of that. I'm going to vote yes for it, because I think in the spirit of the times, you know, of Commissioner Proctor's point, we're living in very inflationary times.
Fair.
I think it's a, you know, I can understand the perspective, and I support this, I'm going to vote for it. But as a general matter, I think it ties our people's hands behind their back when they, when they aren't able to reward the exceptional behavior among our employees. Every employee in Leon County is a worthwhile employee. I mean, we see and work with them all day long, and it's not about, it's not about not respecting some people that work in our organization. It's about rewarding the exceptional performers that are doing the incredible work and inspiring those that want to get there to do the same thing, and giving our managers the power and the ability, an important tool in their toolbox, to create incentives to do even better. So I had to say that because I think it's important, but I do support Options 1 through 8, and I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I, since the substitute motion failed and we're looking at a whole block, you know, I just want to point out, when we consider across-the-board 5% increase, keep in mind, we're dipping into our fund balance, $1.2 million. That is, we already, by standard practice, if we did not approve this, we would be handing out 3% overall. We're increasing it 2% more to make it 5 for everybody, notwithstanding the valid performance and motivation arguments. I think if we dip into, point this out, we're not dipping into fund balance for a $1.2 million increase. This is a raise, as merit raises would be at 3%. Next year, we still got to come up with that 1.2, on top of fiscal '23's 1.2. And if we do this again next year, because once you do it twice, who's going to vote against it a third time, or a fourth time, or a fifth time? It becomes the standard. We're continuing to multiply the budget impact, continuing these. And that's my concern, because, you know, the state is giving raises now, as I hear, and I've been a state employee before, and I've looked through the history of our pay policy at the county, and it is not the same. The state went for a decade without raises and with a few one-time pays, and that is not how we've treated county employees. And so I think it's important to keep in mind, we have a long-term view of treating our employees well, not just when other agencies do, but throughout the career of our employees. The other thing is, you know, I look at giving, if we want to give more money to employees, there's a better way to do it that's not up for discussion today, based on the motion. When we put 1.2 million on top of this, some employees will go from, if they were getting a poor performance review, 0% to 5%. Some employees, if they were going to get a great performance review, they're going from 5% to 5%. But what we're doing is we're giving up 1.2 million from our savings account for a rainy day, when there's a new pandemic, when there's a new recession, that won't be there to keep those employees, to keep those positions. And as we face significant issues that we admit, we don't have enough money to fix fully, affordable housing, public safety, we are now deciding that there's 1.2 million that we would rather use for this than if we would use it for that, which is always the decision we make. And so I will also vote for 1 through 8, even though individually I would not vote for it as it is. There are too many good things in here that are more important, specifically our sidewalk grant applications for millions of federal money to improve safety. And I hate, I hate that we see the news of so many people getting killed, and then I look at our Safe Streets For All work that CRTPA is doing and our county's doing, and it's the area. It's just if they were, if it was five years from now, the new grant money would have built the sidewalk already. And so I'll be voting for this. I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, for time to make those extra arguments. Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for forwarding one more round, talk about this. I'm very clear that the most important asset, and I'm sure that county administrator and senior administrators agree, our most important resources and asset of Leon County is not our fleet of tractors and big trucks, it's not this building, our buildings that we have, it's not a number of things, the landfill, all the parks. The most important resource in Leon County under our government's auspices are our employees, period. Then you got to count down 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 places down to figure what comes second. But the first and most important thing is that our employees are able to meet their responsibilities and come back to serve the rest of this county, day after day, month after month. Now, if someone in senior administration does not believe that, they should not be in senior administration under this Board's direction. But this senior administration understands the value, the worth, the need, the necessity. Now, there's a submarine I heard that was lost, sinking with about 72 hours of air, oxygen, and I don't know, maybe they found it this morning. Now, should you go down there and try to get the most important person off, there's a billionaire on that submarine, and you just, you know, you just hate to lose a billionaire because he pays, his impact, the ripple effect. Do you go down there looking for that one guy and say, well, if we can pull him off, you know, the rest of them, we'll see you later, you know? They go in the Davy Jones locker. No. If there is an effort to rescue, you're going to get everybody on the submarine, not just that billionaire. Now, we can take the prissy approach to reward and punishment and recognize just those meritorious, most outstanding employees, and that's like going to get the billionaire off, the most highly off the thingy, and let everybody else go. We all is on a sinking submarine, and it's not that we are taking a deep dive, it's just that the water levels of inflation, insurance, cars, housing, responsibilities, food, we all are being submerged, and we ain't diving nowhere, just the water levels are going up. That's why it's important at this time, given rising waters, that we try to carry philosophically. We might get to a point where this thing subsides, and let's just recognize the important people who've done the most outstanding. But right now, we are a team, we are a family, and we got to stick together and try to bear our burdens together. And I believe that this approach, Mr. Chairman, in all honesty, speaks to the comprehensive effort to carry forward as many of our most important resources as we can. Those are my convictions. In this particular year, I have supported in previous years, the recognition of merit pay, I've flipped and, you know, done it all, and there are different management. But in terms of this particular year, maybe perhaps for a time such as this, we have Option 8 to lift our most precious resource and assets, our county employees. I urge you all, all of us, to support 1 through 8. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I believe this is likely going to pass unanimously, but I did have a couple of questions. Mr. Administrator, just for the sake of history, how many times over the past, let's say 12 years, have we given across-the-board raises instead of merit?
Last year was the first year that I can recall.
I wanted to give Commissioner O'Keefe some comfort in that this Board set precedents, but it does not necessarily become a trend. We do things as they, as they are necessary to do. And I think Commissioner Proctor has a point, and in these times where we're seeing inflation so high and housing costs increasing the way they are, even for us to get increases as we've been, as we've been given by legislature, why not consider our same type of increases for our own employees? And I, I had some reservations when I first thought about it, and Commissioner Proctor said 5% again this year, because we gave 5% last year, but then when I thought about it, when I really thought things over, I realized how fair that really is, given the times that we're in. We're not a, again, we're not a board that just does things because it sounds good. I think we've become known as a board due to things that's necessary. I believe this gives a great, great indication to our county employees that we understand that they are the ones who do the work, they are the ones who make us look good up here. I believe it also gives indication to them that we understand how to create a great organization through leadership of our county administration and approval of budget and policy by us. I ask, like I said, I feel like this is going to go unanimous, unanimously, but in this moment, as we take this motion up and as we move forward this budget agenda, I've heard, I've heard Commissioner Minor, I've heard Commissioner O'Keefe, and I've heard their thoughts on it, and I don't think there's a manager out there in Leon County that works for this organization that our county administrator and his team has hired that would be uncomfortable with us taking the responsibility into our own hands, not just to give them the 5% increase, but to give even the lowest pay within their managerial responsibilities the same 5% increase. So like I said, I'm very comfortable with this, and I think this is the type of organization that we are, and this is the type of organization that we'll continue to be. I expect next year, we'll come back, we'll have another conversation about merit raises or whatever constitutes the times that our employees are in, to make them feel good about working right here in Leon County. Mr. Administrator, how often do you have folks leave this organization to go to higher paying and other opportunities that they may have within the state or even the county?
Well, I would just say, not as often as other organizations, but often, fairly regularly, yes.
My point is, is that it does not happen very often, and from the top down, our folks are approached all the time. And the reason they decide to stay is because of the organization that we have built here in Leon County. There's no, there's no mistake that this county administrator was here, has been here 30-some-odd years, was here even longer before he took the reins, this county administrator, and didn't decide to leave. Kim Morris, Shinkin Lammy, all the young talent that has matriculated, not as employees, but started out as interns here, to come on as managers and grow throughout Leon County are still here, not because of any other reason, but because of the culture that exists in Leon County and the decisions that this Board makes. And this 5% that we're talking about right now is one of those types of decisions that we make to keep our employees right here and happy at Leon County. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries out, objections, administrator, next item. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. I realize we've taken a vote on the matter, and I realize that we're in a workshop setting, but I think that Commissioner O'Keefe did reflect on something that we did not, as a board addressed, and I was wondering before we transitioned to the next item, as a post-reflection to our vote, would you allow comments additional? And I didn't pounce on his comment, but he touched the big issue of what is occurring nationally, and he talked about the sheriff's budget, that 2,000-pound elephant in the room, a $30 million projected growth of five years, Atlanta, that's all right, I won't bring apples and oranges, but you saw the numbers and the lion's share of what taxpayers are paying is going to the sheriff's office, and it's like we're in an era where you can go up on any kind of increase on taxpayers in the name of public safety, and you don't even really scrutinize it, you just politically correct, go with the flow. And I just didn't want to leave this, that point, that I thought was a tremendous point, and we are philosophically, without a refuting argument, we are placed in a posture of voicelessness, and it's just not popular. You can't say things about certain alphabets, LGBTQ, you're just politically incorrect. And you really can't say a critique of funding of law enforcement. It's the same self-electrocute yourself. So we don't have a political framework at this time to even be critical about asking hard questions of law enforcement, because they just ask, and public bodies just have to give, and I'm concerned about that. And I think that at some point in our future, maybe that's a separate sit-down standalone, but just to, that we have been made mutants, we've been made voiceless creatures to law enforcement, and you see that across the street as well. You just go with the flow and give, and give, and give. But I think that we need a hard sit-down to talk about that thing, and we're not the only body who is strapped and don't know the right words to refute this, but it's just a thingy. And I'd like to see us at some point have a workshop looking specifically at law enforcement, the sheriff's future. Now, unique to what we're doing this morning from previous years, the sheriff would have, in years before, come before us and presented all of his highlights and made an argument for what he wanted in his budget. But we now defer, and the sheriff makes that argument to our staff. But we now defer, and the sheriff makes that argument to our staff. And we defer that power, that authority. We have deferred and empowered our staff with immense powers. The sheriff doesn't even have to speak to us, but he does have to speak to our staff to explain their numbers. I think that those numbers are so uniquely lifted above the other constitutions and are growing exponentially, that we really need to have a sit-down and see the whites of the sheriff's eyeballs and the staff in explaining to us that we're able to comfortably explain to the public what is going on. I just hope I said that in the right way, no desire to offend, simply to speak to the context of what you lifted up, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so much.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as we shared with you at your April budget workshop, the county is slated to receive approximately $2 million over the next 18 years from the opioid litigation settlement. That's about $110,000 a year. We're proposing that these funds be used for substance abuse treatment services for people in the criminal justice system by using the felony drug court model administered through the court administrator's office. The attorney general's office has provided guidance on the approved uses of these funds, and this proposal, of course, aligns with that guidance. As noted in the item, commissioners, the proposed plan aligns with the board's strategic initiatives and is also supported by our criminal justice partners to help manage jail population. The plan would use the funds from the opioid settlement to expand treatment and recovery services to people in felony drug court. And if the board approves this plan for using the opioid settlement funds, staff will draft a memorandum of agreement with court administration outlining the terms and conditions of the utilization of these funds, which we brought back to you for your consideration this fall in the form of an agenda item. With that, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we are recommending option one.
There are most for option one. Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Minor, and the objection. Seeing insurance approved unanimously, next item.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is more of a response for information, not a whole lot of action intended, or we're not really seeking action from the board on this item, but to provide you some additional information that was requested at your last budget workshop. And actually, it was at the homelessness workshop where this issue was discussed related to the significant, the level of funding that the county provides for human services as well as for homelessness programs and services annually. As presented in this item, Commissioner, there was a, the issue that was raised was, again, can we appropriate and budget 1% or up to 1%? Previously, the argument had been, you know, should we, in the county, be budgeting 1% for human services? During the homelessness workshop, the issue was raised that, again, should we be budgeting 1% for homelessness? Again, commissioners, this item provides information to you that 3% of the county's total budget is currently dedicated to human services, including 1.4% for homelessness, homelessness programs and services. This exceeds the 1% threshold, of course, as discussed at that time. Additionally, actions taken by the board at the workshop on homelessness will increase funding for homelessness even further, and that will be addressed in the upcoming fiscal year. We will also, we're also evaluating long-term dedicated funding for shelter operations in partnership with the city of Tallahassee and other stakeholders. We are prepared to answer any questions that you might have on this issue and are recommending option one.
Is there a motion for option one? Motion made by Commissioner Minor, third second. Seconded by Commissioner Caban, Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Caban.
Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to other commissioners and I'll go.
Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. County Administrator, thank you very much for this agenda item, appreciate it. Just a quick question. At the workshop we had on homelessness, we did have some follow-up items, like the ordinance on panhandling and the medians and such. Do you have a sense for when those items will come back to us?
Yes, they're being scheduled. Since you took that last action, they are being scheduled for your public hearings.
Okay. Do you think July is going to be when we might start to see some of this coming back?
No, that will be coming back in probably early September, I think, at this point, not July.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Yes. Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Without bringing up a whole nother discussion on this topic, because I know we just had a workshop, one thing that's really just not sitting right with me with this chart, and I'm hoping as a group, we can maybe have a quick discussion on, the Operation Veteran Homeless Stand Down is second to last, third to last of all our programs that we're funding in our homelessness budget. To me, that doesn't sit well, considering that, you know, these are folks who serve our country and fought for the ability for us to sit here and go through a budget and have this conversation. So for me, I would like to see that, you know, more money allocated from this preliminary budget, have some money moved around so that we could increase that operation more.
Mr. Administrator.
This simply represents the need for funding for this program. It represents their request. This satisfies.
This is what they requested.
And Wanda can provide more detail.
And where is that, is the request coming from? Just for clarification, Commissioner Caban.
The courts coordinate this program every year. They provide guidance in terms of what their funding needs are. The county administrator, this is their funding needs.
For those who couldn't hear because of the mic, because I think folks on TV probably couldn't be able to hear, but Stand Down is a request from the courts to the county for funding. The amount reflected there simply reflects the amount requested by the courts.
May I respond? May I comment?
Commissioner Caban first.
You're unfinished.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Robert's Ave, there's a housing development that houses veterans. I can't think of the name off the top of my head, but I toured that sometime earlier this year. And, I mean, they do have some big desperate needs over there in regards to their housing situation. And I think anyone who, you know, drives on Pensacola Street or Tennessee Street, and you see and you hear about veterans who are actively homeless, who are suffering from mental health issues or health issues of any nature, you know, though that's their ask, when I see this list, when I see the money that we're pouring out, and they're less than 1% of that budget, to me, that just doesn't sit well. So, you know, I don't know if we want to have a further conversation about it as a board, but I do believe when we look at this budget, how much we're allocating, and you see we're spending $40,000 out of 4.8 million for a veteran homelessness outreach, it just doesn't sit well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner, I'm sorry, I'm on point, now I'm vice chair.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just on point, in relation to the chart and the Veterans Homeless Stand Down, and I understand that that is what was requested for that particular initiative. And just to explain, and I've had the opportunity to attend it, the homeless stand down essentially brings all the services together under one roof during one weekend of exhibition. And the homeless population attends this exhibition. This year, it was held at the Lawson Center. Okay. And so this $40,000, I imagine, was used to perhaps rent a facility and logistics as far as renting tents and what have you. But throughout that arena, all of the service providers that specifically target veterans was included. So there were several, you know, just hundreds of booths where information, brochures, and also services, goods was passed out to the veterans. So from that standpoint, and knowing the parameters of that homeless stand down program, I don't have a problem with the $40,000, because that's what they requested, just operational. Okay? The Veterans Emergency Assistance Program, 62,000, I'm not sure if that's a result of a specific request or if that's a result of what we've allocated in the past. So I would like Commissioner Caban, as the county administrator, or if someone on the panel knows, has any information about that 62,000. Is that what we allocate, or is that what?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, and we could, and we can provide you additional information about that. That is, that's simply the county's line item funding for a specific program. But if you look further up in all the funding, that doesn't include any CHSP funding that nonprofit organizations may be utilizing to provide for veteran services and that sort of thing as well. But we can provide more information if you'd like.
Are you done? Yes? On point, then I'm going to Commissioner Proctor, he's been waiting a while.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think this requires a motion, but maybe one thing that could settle, you know, so the conversation, so we can continue to move forward, is county administrator, do you think that we could reach out to our providers and ask them to just send a report back on how much of their budget that we allocate to them is spent on veteran services?
Just for clarification, Commissioner, are you referring to all the agencies funded through the community human services partnership?
Correct.
Yeah. And let me just pivot for just a minute, if I could. Shinkton, could you join us up here for just a moment? Yeah. I just think this may be helpful, just to provide a clear picture on this. But Shinkton, you've heard some of the conversation, and in addition to everything that your shop does related to CHSP and the outside agencies, obviously, we're running the veteran services office, just wanted to give you an opportunity to provide some.
Wait, before we go there, before we go there, we started off this conversation talking about homelessness and the amount of money that we allocate towards homelessness. It sounds like this is drifting into a conversation exclusively about veteran services, which we have a whole department dedicated to such services. If we want to have that discussion, that's a totally different discussion than the money that we're allocating on homelessness. And I would like for us to focus this conversation specifically on homeless service. Now, if we want to have a discussion about our veteran services, I would like to do it outside the purview of this. That's cool? So now, so is this specifically, your question specifically about the veteran services or the veteran services that are related to homelessness?
Thank you for the clarification. It is related to homeless, veteran services are related to homelessness. But, you know, for the sake of brevity and moving this meeting along, why don't I just make a motion for a status report in relation to services, homeless services related to veterans?
I tell you what, we got a motion on the floor for option number one, but I will entertain that motion for, actually, I can, no, I can't. I'll entertain your motion after we take up the main motion of option number one. Is that okay?
Yep. No further questions.
All right. All right. So I got Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Caban, and Commissioner Minor.
Mr. Chairman, my comments would be related to Commissioner Caban's awaiting motion, and I have no comments on the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Caban? I'm sorry, Commissioner Minor, can we take a motion? All right. So look, we got option number one on the floor is accepting a report on a county investment in human and homeless services made by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner Caban, I believe. Yes. All those in favor?
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, and what we heard was that we already exceed 1% of our budget.
Yes, sir.
That's what we heard.
Yes, sir. All those in favor of the motion on the floor that came by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries out. Objection. Now, would you like to make that substitute motion? Am I in order?
Yes.
That's the main motion. Yes, I'm sorry, new motion, but it has to pass unanimously, correct? Yes, yes. All right. So this new motion on the floor is for a status report, looking at veteran homeless services to come back to us for our review, and it's made by Commissioner Caban, seconded by Commissioner Minor? Seconded by Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Caban, and Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm hopeful that we'll allow Shinkton's comments, because I think it makes some sense. I had in my notes to indicate and ask our board for a workshop on human services agency, and what are we doing? What is our mission among and with each? What are our goals? And it's been a long time since we have assessed what are we doing, and it's in keeping. There's no doubt that the face of veterans has lifted the issue of homelessness for multiple years under W, and the nation was appalled and shocked about homelessness because veterans, a large population of homelessness, was involved. But plain old people being homeless don't get it. But if you go and fought for the nation, the spread of democracy, and come back and don't have services, it triggers all kinds of angst inside of the Beltway of Washington. But I think Commissioner Caban, in addition to your, what you're asking, it was my desire to see, and maybe we can, both can morph into a comprehensive look at human services in Leon County. And where we were philosophically 10, 12 years ago, people need to reignite and renew their vows of where we're going in our human services. And I think the fact that we, I'm not saying we're drifting, that there's drift, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that accountability and us, under the mind and hearts, which are ours that we share, how does it fit into the scope? And I think that we need some eyeball contact with some of the agencies, and I would love to see what you're saying highlighted. But human services to all the people, what they're doing and how we need them, and Commissioner Minor probably has the most impressive resume and been in the trenches, from the food perspective, the hunger perspective, he knows poverty, he's seen and been in those trenches. But I just think that we need to bring him and look at it and recalibrate, because as you were saying, if somebody is number three from the bottom, well, how is this number three from the bottom? And it may be some other things that we think ought not be number three at the bottom, or number two at the bottom. So I think we should look at the entire situation, and I'm very respectful and appreciative for the work coming out of Shinkton, Shinkton's office and his directorship. It's become a force, it's become so vital, people leaning on that office with everything they got, because what that office delivers makes a critical difference. Let's just say that in District One, District One, from Thorpe Street down to Interior, Urban Core, South Side, down to Woodville, Jesus, is critical. So I probably rely on Shinkton's office, and bother in Shinkton's office maybe a little bit more than some of you, but I totally respect Shinkton for day after day being the vanguard for people, it's important. But commissioners, we would advantage, advantage our own understandings of this resource if we were able to capture what he's saying and what I'm trying to say together, and have a nice workshop to see, and recalibrate some things if need be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds like to me, where we're going with this, and Shinkton, I wouldn't allow you to speak, is the workshop being more about CHSP as well as veteran services and what we're doing, what organizations are doing in that way. Is that reflecting kind of what your thoughts were, Commissioner Proctor? That we're not just focused on veteran services, but we also focus on CHSP as a whole?
It's just that, in this realm, veterans are very much underwater, and they homeless, they jobless, they forgotten, left out. It's all morphed together, except they served and got some stripes and everybody else didn't, but they the same wayward, untoward, lives going around in circles and living in the world. in the woods. We, I, 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 I mean, I don't want nobody to stand uh, on the side of Walmart. I don't want people living on the side of uh, Crawfville Road Publix, but they do. Um, they do. So it's just that politically, we react and you get a bigger buzz. When you say veterans, homeless veterans, oh, shame, shame, shame on America's flag. You know, they give it a little more appeal uh, because they are veterans. But everybody's suffering and if Commissioner Caban is comfortable, I'm okay with it. But if he's not, we can separate and do two different things.
So what you're asking for again is for, for this workshop to encompass not just veteran services, but everyone?
I'm, I'm good with both. I'm good with them being morphed as one. Because hu- human suffering is what we're talking about.
Commissioner Caban, you want to speak to whether or not you're going to accept that amendment?
Yes, sir. I think um, how we should move forward with this, we can include it in the status report. Let's look at the status report. And if, and if, and if per the status report, when it comes back, we can have a conversation in the meeting. Do we need to have a workshop? But I think without having it laid out in front of us, um, I don't want to jump immediately to the end. I think a status report would be probably a good first step. Um, does that work with you, Commissioner Proctor?
No, um, I'm, I get different phone calls from y'all. I'm already up on the status of poor people in poverty.
I tell you what, Commissioner Proctor, if, if that doesn't work for you, if you want to make a substitute motion, I'll entertain it.
I don't, I want us to come, I want to substitute out. I, I just, commissioners, all I'm saying, I catch more hell off of more poor folk. I get more problems. I got more poor folk. I got way more issues. I don't need a status. I don't need it. But if, if that brings the um, enlightenment of the rest of the board, we can go that direction. I'm patient. I'm here for the long run.
I think we're talking about two different things. For me, and I, I, I would, I would support that sentiment. Um, the, the initial conversation was about just veterans seeing that when I look at this, the budget in regards to homeless services, the veterans are at the bottom.
I see.
So that's why I want to bring up to see what money we're spending, uh, status report from veteran services in Leon County. But I, so I think what you're saying is a workshop for all human services to get some realignment.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't disagree at all. So um, but right now, I just want to make this clarifying that we are, I, I, I don't disagree, but I think we're saying two different things right at this second.
We good. Commissioners one and two are good. We, we on the same page.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Commissioner Minor was on, I think he had something quick on point. I do have Commissioner O'Keefe in queue to speak.
Chairman, now the motion's still on the floor to uh, have uh, Commissioner Caban's motion about agenda come back on, on.
Uh, it's, it's a status report.
Status report, okay. Um, but regarding Commissioner Proctor's point, I, I know it's not germane to the motion, but just to, just to address Commissioner Proctor's point, um, I believe the two-year funding cycle for CHP is coming up soon, right?
We're, yeah, we're in the middle of the first um, two, first year of the two-year funding cycle.
Gotcha. Yeah, I was thinking, I couldn't remember if um, we were completing one two-year cycle, in which case we would then have to figure out what our allocations would be for the, the next two-year cycle. But we're right in the middle of that, so it doesn't matter. I mean, if, what I was going to say, Commissioner Proctor, is if we were at the end of that two-year cycle and had to decide how much funding for CHP for the next two-year cycle, that'd be a perfect time for us to have that in-depth discussion. Because that's when we reevaluate what the county's share of the CHP dollars are going to be. Um, but uh, so your, your point about having a, something come back to us where we take a look at this, I think could still be worthwhile because we wouldn't get that, that opportunity to reallocate CHP dollars for another year. Is that correct?
That's correct, but um, just keep in mind commissioners, as part of the item we'll bring in the fall when we talk about um, dedicated uh, or line item funding for homeless providers or the emergency homeless shelters, that'll be also part of larger conversation around CHP.
Gotcha. In, in addition to CHP?
Yes.
In addition, okay. All right. I wish I clarified it for you, Commissioner Proctor.
I mean, it's, it's, it's as clear as mud. Yes.
All right. So look, I got, I got, I got Commissioner O'Keefe, but I got Commissioner Cummins on point. Commissioner O'Keefe, would you mind? Commissioner Cummins, no more, no more on points after this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'd just like to ask uh, Shinkton um, if there is any input on the House's procedures, criteria that CHSP uses to determine funding, funding levels to the applicants. Is there any input or do they establish their own criteria on policies?
No. So for CHP, we have an application process that is established. Um, and the, um, the applications are submitted by agencies with um, funding requests. And those are reviewed by um, citizen review teams. Um, once the citizen review teams review those applications and um, and evaluate the, the programs, because what CHP do, does is funds programs, not agencies, then those recommendations, uh, they make a recommendation on funding level. And then those recommendations come before the county and city commissions in the fall.
Right, right. And I understand that, I understand that, the procedure. But my question is, I know there's a citizens review team, there, there are certain criteria. Is that established by, in conjunction with the county? Or is that organization, is CHP establishing their own criteria?
Before we get too far, wait, 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 before we get too far down this road.
Okay.
What we're discussing now is a status report speaking specifically to veteran services, correct? Now, I want to make sure, now, now we're getting into a conversation about, talking about CHP and allocations and, and rules and how we do that. I want to pull us back into focusing on veteran services. If we want to have that workshop about CHP, which have we had one since, since the board, since, since our new board has taken place, since the new commissioners have come on? Have we had one?
No, no, we haven't had.
We have not. If we want to have that workshop, I'm, I'd be willing to entertain that motion um, for us to look at it so we can actually, especially for the, for the, for the, for the benefit of new commissioners. And since we do have a one-year cycle ending, we can look at that and have that conversation a little later, but I don't want to tease it out right here.
But this on point of Mr. Chair, many of those service providers and nonprofits provide services to the veterans. So it's all interrelated. And I just wanted to.
Yeah, I get that part. I get that part. I, I think, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get to is, is that they do, but if Shinkton will tell you, what, what Shinkton will tell you, there's, there's, we have a whole veteran services department that's funded, that's dedicated specifically to veteran services, that's totally outside of any of the funding that's placed on this sheet, correct, Mr. Administrator? So, so if I, if I were to ask the question of how much, how much do we allocate towards our veteran services department? And then how much money uh, does the veteran, has the veteran services department, um, let's say brought in and leveraged from other sources to go towards veteran services? I would imagine that, that number would be a lot larger than, I guess, the hundred and thirty, the hundred and forty, that's thousands reflected here, correct?
Yes.
So, 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 so when Shinkton was going to speak, when, when the county administrator asked him to come up, what I was guessing was the county administrator was going to ask Shinkton to speak on not just the homeless piece of it, but all the veteran services that we have and all the monies and, and, and the fact that we have a professional specifically uh, manning that department to, to, to actually look at these things. And so I'm, I'm kind of, I, I get where we're going with, with the CHP and, and other, like, we're, we're trying, we're trying to find out how much money we're allocating of these dollars towards veteran services. But I guess what I'm saying is, I'm, I'm trying to decipher whether, whether we want to have a conversation, because, because Commissioner Proctor's conversation was more in line on, I got poor folk calling me every day, we need to look at CHP as a whole, not just veteran services. Right, Commissioner Proctor?
Very much.
Whereas Commissioner Caban was concerned about veteran services because he saw the lower amount that we're spending within this budget. And he wanted to know, okay, if this, if, if, what else are we spending besides these things that goes towards veteran services, which was, which was what Shinkton would put in the status report that will come back to us? Now, Commissioner um, Vice Chair, what you're asking for specifically is, well, I think, and somebody else might ask the question specifically this way, of the CHP things that are done, how mu- how can we break out how much of those dollars in CHP are specifically towards veteran services? Which, which, because there are kids, children's services, veteran services, and other things in there, how can we tease that out? Which, which too can be a part of the um, specific um, status report that Commissioner Caban asked about. So I'm trying to keep us in line here to understand that, hey, I, I do agree, especially with the one year on CHP ending, it, it would be a good idea for us maybe to take, do a workshop looking at CHP, how the first year's going, you know, what we're looking at for this, for the next year allocation. Because I'm just thinking about it this way, we got a whole children's services uh, council out there with about, what, eight million dollars that we didn't have the last time we reviewed CHP? So we might want to have a conversation around that. So, so, and I, and I do, our staff is very good about putting us in a, in a, in a posture of planning way ahead of time of having to make decisions. So what I would like to do, if I could, I'm going to hear Commissioner O'Keefe, because he did say, he, he did, he was in queue for a long time. I'm going to come back to you for that last on point, and I'm going to go to Commissioner O'Keefe, and I'm going to go to the vote. I'm going to ask Commissioner Caban to repeat his vote, um, to repeat his, his motion. And Shinkton, would you like to speak towards what we do in, in veteran services?
Yes, I can. I can speak to that.
Okay. So before you speak, I'm going to go to Shinkton, then I'm going to repeat that motion, and then we're going to go to a vote. Cool on that? All right. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chair, I, I withdraw my comments at this point, and I deal to, to Shinkton.
Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and thank you, Commissioner Caban, for pointing this out. This, what we do for veterans is very important. Uh, my family, my father, very much rely on his veteran benefits. Um, and great minds think alike, because the chairman went right where I was going. Um, since I've started, I've done a lot of meetings um, with Ben Bradwell, our very effective manager of veteran services, which encompasses more than just homelessness, but that is a big part of it. And um, I, uh, at the stand down, we saw all the great partners that come together. Um, and I got to see veteran, uh, veteran treatment court graduation, that judge, the program that Judge Aiken started, um, that's been successful. And I just, I want the status report, it's important, but I know that we do a lot, um, and I want, I don't want anyone to leave this meeting without Shinkton having a minute to, to let people know generally that we do a lot more than the stand down and the emergency. Um, so people know that, and then we'll get into detail. That was all. Thank you.
All right. Shinkton, can you start out, as you start your comments, with just exactly how much we spend on veteran services, if you could give us an estimate?
Um, that information is.
All right, Mr. Administrator.
I can tell you, just in terms of operating budget, veteran service, about a half a million dollars, but let's not forget, commissioners, and it's been referenced here today, the big, big number is the, the board has a, a target established for a five-year target in terms of what we're going to, the economic impact of what we're doing for veterans, including the uh, uh, claims and what we're bringing in. That number's a hundred and fifty million dollars over five years. And that's what we're, that's what we're on target to hit.
Shinkton?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, what, what I would like to add, commissioners, so I want to make it very clear that we work every day to serve our veterans over at our offices of human services and community partnerships. Um, and we're very closely with partners here in our community to address specifically veteran homelessness. Um, when we're, and I think what you were mentioning, Commissioner Caban, was Homefront. Homefront is the name of the um, facility that's run by Family Promises. Um, there's significant, significant level of federal dollars that come to our community to assist homeless veterans. Um, Family Promise also runs the veteran's street outreach um, program here in our community. So there's actually street outreach teams specifically dedicated to veterans. But financially for Leon County, through our Veteran Emergency Assistance Program, we're making sure that veterans don't lose their homes. Um, we do that every day through the Veteran Emergency Assistance Program, or also called VEVE. Uh, we work closely with the VA to um, assist individuals, uh, veterans to receive what they call HUDVASH. HUDVASH is the, is the um, is the voucher program for veterans. So to ensure, ensure that veterans have the voucher needed to go get a rental, um, you know, those who are chronically homeless. We work closely with the VA regarding that. We work closely with the COC um, regarding that. Also, we work closely with American Legion, where they have the Veteran Legals um, Cooperative that meets every other Thursday over at their American Legion. So that way veterans who need assistance with any legal issues, and a lot of times those legal issues is issues with landlords. Um, so that way they can have access to legal services that way. Um, also, we've got um, Operation Thank You, as you all know, that we hold every Veterans Day um, in partnership with American Legion, and we work very closely um, with partners to make sure we can get veterans there. Commissioners, as you know, when you go to the event, what you primarily see is us celebrating our veterans with, you know, pancakes and, and coffee and eggs. But there's another layer to that, where we're actually co- um, uh, working with the American Legion to also create a relationship, especially with those veterans who kind of have, doesn't really work very closely with veteran service organizations. That event allows, um, gives those veteran service organizations, like the American Legion, like VFW, an opportunity to connect with those individuals, those gentlemen, those women, so that way they can access services. And also gives our veteran service office the opportunity to connect with them and get them access to VA benefits, state benefits that they may have access to and things like that. We're also working very closely right now with Family Promise to look at, because Family Promise is the one that runs a lot of our local um, VA, uh, VA housing programs here in our commi- community, to look at um, actually building more affordable units for veterans who are chronically homeless. Um, so that's something that we're addressing, again, every single day. HUDVASH, the VA program, actually meets at our office every Monday, um, where they're wo- working, so that way they can, so they can provide wraparound services to chronically homeless veterans um, who are currently in a unit but need to get other wraparound services, maybe mental health, maybe it's substance abuse um, ser- services, um, job training, whatever those resources it may be. So that's something, again, doing every day. We are a very veteran-friendly county, and we're proud of that. And so um, that's just a few things. More than happy to bring a status report to, to um, uh, bring that. It's going to be pretty lengthy, just a heads up, um, if that's what you'd like. Uh, but um, that's just a little bit on the surface. Good stuff.
Shinkton, thank you. I, I, I think, I, I want him, I'm glad the county minister asked him to come in, he didn't want to speak, because we have been known over the years for being very, very, very veteran-friendly. And the numbers on, on here may be low in, in terms of what they reported here, but when it comes to veteran services, I put us up against anybody in this nation. Um, and, and I think the veterans that are here, that are providing the services, uh, even when we go to our Memorial Day uh, uh, breakfasts, they, they always compliment about how good it is to live in Leon County and how well we do when it comes to veteran services. Now, um, could we, if there's places that we can add, I would be very proud to be able to do that for our veterans here in Leon County. But I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put us, I wouldn't put us second to none.
Ms. Chairman, to add to what you just said, if you'd allow, um, I think that asks us for a one-day event. When I did the math to it, if, if forty thousand was the number you saw, Commissioner Caban, was it forty thousand?
Correct. So when, I, I hear.
That's forty thousand for one day, and I did the math. If we were, if we were funding veterans at that rate, um, my number says something like twelve point six million a year. So when you give something forty thousand for a day, it, it adds up to a nice chunk. So it's, it's a one-day event, you know, or weekend event.
Well, when I, when I look at these numbers, guys, I see, I hear all the sentiment, and that's great. I'm talking about investment in homelessness. I'm not talking about, and I've been very clear, I'm not talking about veteran services as a county. I'm talking about veterans homelessness services. And, you know, I appreciate the conversation, but I'm looking at the numbers. Numbers are in front of us. The last two budget items of the three, two out of the three are from veteran services. Period. So um, when, when we're talking about, you know, X, Y, and Z, like, I'm looking at the numbers right in front of me. So anyone can pull it up, and you have the budget, two of the last three are for veteran services. So I, I'm, I'm proud for what we do for veterans as a county. I think that's great. But I think that when we look at where we're spending, spending our money, and we're talking about people who fought for our country and fought for the ability for us to sit up here, and who probably more than most have PTSD because they serve our country and they're living on the streets, I think that is a group that we should go out of our way and make sure that we are taken care of. Um, and so, you know, I'm, that's going to be the last of my comments on this. I think a status report would be a great first start, but the numbers are right in front of us, guys. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. I think the point is, is that we do go out of our way, more than out of our way. We continue to do even more as time comes, as the opportunity comes. Like I said, I don't, I don't think we're short on, 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 on how we treat our veterans. But I, I'm looking forward to the status report, us reading it over, and if, if there's more that we should do or can't do, or conversation around workshop needs to happen, I look forward to having that workshop. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, can I say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries without objection. We'll go next, to the next item.
Mr. Chairman, you say you're going to entertain a motion for a workshop?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Workshop on CHP.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Commissioner Proctor. Moved by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Caban, and that workshop exclusive, uh, uh, I would like for us to focus on, um, what, what's happened over the past year, what we're looking like in the future, and, uh, maybe pre-preliminary conversations on, on, uh, what we, what we intend to do, or possibilities of how we handle Children's Services, Children's Services funding through our CHSP, uh, uh, funding, uh, and, uh, procedures.
Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, um, take away from our own talk time, but...
Yes, sir.
Uh, it really is something that deserves a city commission to be, uh, at the table in the room. It really ought to be a county, city-county joint to know what we're doing, uh, because everybody that lives in the city lives in Leon County. Um, and I think we're both, uh, attempting to align, uh, our, our checks to maximize investment in Human Services, and I'm not sure if it can be attained, but I believe it would be, um, we look at a number, issues like blueprint stuff and bricks and mortar, um, zoning, um, comp plan hearings, um, that abstract stuff that we be doing. Um, why can't we also have a meeting with the city to talk about flesh and blood, human beings and suffering?
Joint workshop.
So I would motion for a joint workshop, uh, on this matter, if we can.
Mr. Administrator?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just clarification, I assume a- as we go through those processes, not a surprise, anyone a little difficult to pull together sometimes? I assume the board would still want us, if we can't do that, to proceed with a county commission work.
Certainly. Actually, I, I would like for us to do a work, do our workshop, reach out to the, to the city to see if they want to do a joint workshop. If they do not reply, then that so be it, but I, I want our workshop definitely happening. So motion on the floor, uh, is for this, for the county to have a workshop, uh, on our own, for us to reach out to the city to see if they'd be willing to participate in the joint workshop. If they are, if they will do so, then we have a joint workshop.
Yes, sir.
Um, everybody go with that? Motion made by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Caban. All those in favor that came by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item number four, our final item, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got one more item, uh, we're taking a little bit out of order, but we got five first, and we'll come back to four, but, uh, uh, five is your, uh, Florida Civil Rights Museum item. It's the funding request that the board directed, um, be considered at this workshop. Just a little background, Commissioners, as you'll recall, during last year's budget process, the board supported, uh, the Florida Civil Rights Museum's initial request of sixty thousand dollars to support the startup of the museum. Since that time, FCRM, uh, has worked to finalize its virtual museum webpage, uh, which is planned for launch, uh, later this summer, uh, with exhibits and series featuring local civil rights leaders. As detailed in the item, Commissioners, uh, the request is for an additional sixty thousand dollars to support the continued implementation of the initiative, uh, which will include the addition of virtual programming, as well as community events, uh, promotional campaigns, and engagement efforts. Um, Commissioners, the, uh, the county did support, uh, FCRM's legislative, uh, appropriations request last session, however, uh, it did not receive, uh, funding, and, um, should the board wish to support this request, um, several options, uh, have been presented here for your consideration. Um, option two, uh, being, being, I think, uh, what we referred to earlier in the day, uh, as, uh, an option for you to consider this request and, and, and fund it for the current fiscal year. And with that, Commissioners, uh, we're happy to answer any question. FCRM representatives, um, uh, are also available today. Should the board, um, require any additional information, or, or if you should have any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, move option two. Option two is moved by Commissioner Proctor, or seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Um, Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner O'Keefe, and then, uh, anybody else that come in?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just, um, reemphasize that this is very timely, uh, and it coincides, um, right as we're on the precipice of, uh, celebrating the bicentennial. Um, the data, which I've been able to review thus far, um, it, it totally whets my appetite. Um, it speaks to, um, a method of presenting history in the future. Uh, it brings the museum to everybody with equal access. Um, and it comes in a time when, uh, there's so much opposition to diversity, uh, and inclusion. Uh, I can't think of a more unique way of, um, of, um, of, um, maintaining our values as a community, and as a community that respects, uh, the contributions of, um, of, um, I, I'm somewhat under the influence of having looked at most things Juneteenth on, on specials, uh, CNN, MSNBC, uh, I, I think I've looked at Juneteenth, everything that came on television this weekend, and, uh, I certainly see a role, um, being under that influence, uh, that, I mean, to be a black person and see your history on TV told, um, with, um, is, um, Rashonda, what, what, what that do? I mean, I mean, how you feel about that? I don't know, but it, you can't even find the words. Uh, but it, it uplifts, it inspires, and it does so much more to make one, uh, feel closer to this ideal call and American. And, um, when my history is told, uh, contributions, that word, contributions, are, um, added to the framework, and we'll put inside the family frame of Leon County and what everybody have done, I think it makes us all feel a little bit better, at least for me. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank y'all for this thankless work that you're doing, and, um, it will serve the future. Um, some things you do, it lives beyond you. Uh, y'all gonna be gone, uh, before twenty, uh, what is it? Y'all gonna be gone before twenty-two, twelve, um, but your work has a possibility of standing there, and that's beautiful. I like that.
All right. Motion been made by Commissioner Proctor, or seconded? Or seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe, I believe? Yeah? Uh, yes, sir. I have Commissioner O'Keefe and the Commissioner coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this Florida Civil Rights Museum is, we, everything we invest in isn't, isn't, you know, equal in investments. This is one of the most impressive investments I have seen, from the look that I was able to get on the sneak peek of the virtual museum, in addition to, uh, I agree with everything Commissioner Proctor said, and to just to say that at a time when, um, civil rights history and African-American history is being made more difficult to access, the impressive virtual museum that you have put together with a relatively very small amount of money is exactly what we need. People can access it when it's live from home, from libraries, other organizations can, um, participate in it, and I am not one to be easily impressed when it comes to websites and technology, and this is the most impressive thing I've seen in quite a time. Uh, it's way better than what they're doing with Twitter.
Wait, 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 drop the mic.
And, uh, so I just, I'm excited to see it happen. This is an easy yes for a fantastic investment.
Commissioner, Vice Chair.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want the commission to know, and I think all of us have seen, uh, the results and the fruits of the labor of, uh, Ms. Perkins and Mr. Hollinger, and we see that the investment that county made, uh, in this initiative has, has really just skyrocketed. Um, that virtual museum is awesome, and I know they're still working on it, they're still expanding it, but in this day and time where, um, a lot of what we see is on the virtual platform, I think this platform is just very, very timely. So I certainly support, um, their funding requests for, for this year. Um, funds very well spent, uh, preserving, uh, history, African-American history at a time where, where it's being targeted and close to being just totally eliminated in our, especially in our, our schools, secondary, post-secondary schools. So just want to congratulate you all. If you continue the good work, uh, that you've put into this project so far, it's a project that we'll all be very, very proud of, and I'm proud of what you all have done so far. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for option number two, made by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Any objections to the motion on the floor? Seeing none, show is approved unanimously. I am number four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item, uh, is for the setting of the maximum millage rates pursuant to Florida statutes. This item requests the board consideration to establish the maximum millage rates for utilization in the truth and millage process. Commissioners, millage rates established today will be used by the property praiser for the upcoming trim notices and your public hearings in September. Uh, pursuant to Florida statutes, uh, millage rates can only be decreased, uh, at your public hearings and cannot be increased at that time. This item recommends maintaining the current countywide millage rate and setting the EMS, MSTU millage rate at zero point seven five mils, consistent with your previous direction, and staff is recommending options one and two.
Is there a motion for staff recommendation? Moved by Commissioner O'Keefe, is there a second? Seconded by the Vice Chair. All those in favor of the motion, I'm sorry, Commissioner Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I, this is phenomenal. Um, I asked the county administrator, who is a reigning world-recognized administrator, is there another county that has a, a twelve-year run of not nary, uh, increase in the millage rate over the last twelve years, given all of the, um, inflationary items and things that have occurred? Do we have a peer?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't, um, I don't know how to answer the specific question. Obviously, that, that, that is, uh, noteworthy, uh, but I'll answer it this way. I don't know of another county where it's been more difficult to do. When I say that, I mean, we do not experience the big upticks in property values. Um, the other side of that coin is we don't experience the troughs as much, but again, in some of the briefings we were discussing, it is not unusual for counties in Florida to, to receive twenty-five percent valuation increases in a given year, twenty-seven percent increases in a given, we do not experience that. A, a bad year for us is, is five percent, a great year for us is seven percent, you know, so again, that's, that's the, and we do it with, with some of the greatest value off the tax rolls of, of any county in the state of Florida. So while, uh, you know, the consistency in the general, uh, millage rate, um, again, I, I think is, is noteworthy, um, and there may not be many doing it, I know no one has a more difficult job to do it, uh, than we do. And I say that, uh, on, on behalf of our team, and, and in particular, our budget team, and, and, and obviously, most importantly, the board.
Okay, now, the school board, um, is the other big two-thousand-pound elephant we talked about, the sheriff and how much he draws. Um, how, how do we reflect, and I don't remember seeing a reflection upon the school board's draw on, on property taxes and it, its process? Can you just give us a little brief brief with the school board that we will know, uh, how we level off to them? I know they raise more money. Could you give us something to know how we stand in comparison to the city? We read about them Sunday. The school board, their silence, help us understand.
Mr. Chairman, I, my recollection, and I'm not, haven't looked at it recently, is their millage rate is, is similar to ours when they take into consideration the state millage rate, the RLE, and their debt service requirements? I, I think their aggregate millage rate is very close to our eight mils, but I haven't looked at it in the last year, but it was relatively equal to the county's.
Their, their mils generate, uh, four, five-hundred million dollars. Is that accurate?
They have a lot of state shared revenues too in their budget pressure.
Okay, very good. Okay. I, I, again, just have to, um, pause and say that what we're about to do as we're enacting, Mr. Chairman, uh, under your leadership, um, but this is abnormal, and when you look at, uh, the core of, uh, our county, um, Florida State occupies a large share of the most, um, um, prime property. Uh, the state of Florida, the capital complex, and all of the state buildings occupy prime real estate. Florida University, TCC, um, um, and we still manage not having access to that tax that they would generate if they were commercial private properties. We get not one dime. So to meet the responsibilities which our staff, um, packages for us, a spending plan, we call it a budget, year after year, with, um, the prize-prying jeweled properties off the books, it is amazing that here in year number twelve, no millage. Um, additionally, it is also amazing that we do not receive a fee in lieu of, in lieu of, in lieu of the vast occupation of which, uh, state occupies our land, we get nothing in exchange for that. They say we get state jobs. Additionally, about twenty percent of our property is owned of Leon County, is the federal, uh, United States Forest, and here again, it's not the prime, but it's a huge chunk that we get not one dollar from the federal government. And, um, the potential for that property, which we ought to be fighting for, uh, because we do need a homeless, uh, uh, campus, we need a homeless, uh, campus, among other things, and that property is sitting out there, and it don't do anything. It don't even produce, um, jobs except for the forestry jobs. State of Florida, on the other hand, occupies many areas of Florida State. They produce revenue for, uh, everybody, everybody from the football coach down to the yard man gets paid. Federal government don't produce nothing except for the forest rangers, and that right there is low productivity. But I compliment and, and pause, Mr. Chairman, um, just for the, um, the momentous, uh, occurrence of twelve consecutive years, um, is a, is a highlight to, um, the extraordinary pencil sharpening, uh, and the brilliant work of balancing that has come from, uh, a great staff that we have at Leon County. And, 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 and because I've, well, I didn't change any of y'all's diapers, but, um, um, I've known you for a mighty long time, and I wouldn't have wanted that honor of, of changing your diapers, but I applaud you, and this is a great, great moment. For me, um, just the historosity of it, I think, says a lot. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was just feeling a little emotional there.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, they came by saying, we have a motion, right? Yes, staff recommendation. Um, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, they came by saying aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Administrator, do you have any more business?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and based on the commission's direction today, it doesn't appear to be a need for your July workshop, so we'll reflect that going forward, and we just appreciate all the direction today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Keefe?
Quick motion, um, from mentioned earlier, uh, I move that we add to the sidewalk list for staff to vet and consider, uh, the stretch of Appalachia Parkway from Connor Boulevard east to Appalachia Regional Park, just to be vetted and considered.
Second. Any objection? Seeing none?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Um, Commissioner O'Keefe, um, if you're asking for an, an individual project to be moved up on the priority list, is that, was that, was that the motion?
No, um, this, I'm asking that it be vetted by staff to, them to determine which tier it belongs in the priority list, and, um, not to move it ahead of any project. This, uh, many of our most important sidewalks are already on this list and at top priority. This, not asking for any moving up.
Thank you for the clarification.
All those indicating, all those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. All right, any other thing for Commissioners? Staff? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
Seeing none, we adjourn.